Good evening and welcome to the June 19, 2023, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call on Commissioner Faircall for the invocation and the pledge.
Stand with all the ones again in the presence of you and all the people of our county that look to us or to make good decisions. We ask that we do just that and that those decisions be pleasing and your eyes as well as our decisions. Yes, in the name of the Lord.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will, we will now do our recognition for our retired Cumberland County employees. Forgive me if I say your names wrong at this time, Lisa Blauzer, Blazer? Blauzer, okay. The plaque reads? In recognition of the outstanding services citizens of Cumberland County, June 24, 1996 to December 31, 2022, is from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. And Patricia Carruthers from the Department of Social Services. And this is for in recognition of your outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County. You get it twice. From July 8, 1996 to February 28, 2023. Congratulations. There's still some backbeat. Melissa Campi. For outstanding recognition, in recognition of outstanding services to the citizens of Cumberland County from March 28, 1988, while I was in 11th grade, and December 31, 2022, from finance. Congratulations. Nadia has serviced Cumberland County from December 1, 1997 to February 28, 2023. Congratulations. Wright Perez. I do see our library director, Ms. Faith Phillips, in the audience. Thank you so much for coming. Our county attorney in the audience for the sheriff department, not our county attorney, I guess our county attorney is here, for the sheriff department, or office, I'm sorry. Now, we will move on to approval of the agenda. County manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There's one correction to the agenda for item 3I, uh, 5. The, um, bid award for the law enforcement center and historic courthouse switchgear projects. We had a typo in the base bid. It should have been $252,517, $75. It currently is $225,575. It does not alter the outcome of the bid on the base bid. Everything else was certified, so that was the only change we were having in the agenda.
Okay, if I can get a motion with that correction?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will now move on to presentations. Manager Griff, you will introduce the next item and speaker, please.
Yes, we have a presentation from the sheriff, sheriff department on the Coliseum Inn abatement and injunction update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Brothers. I'm chief deputy with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. I'm standing in for Sheriff, Sheriff NSW Wright. I also have with me our legal counsel, Mr. Ronnie Mitchell. And I want to speak a little bit on the Coliseum Inn. On June 12, 2023, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office served the Coliseum Inn an abatement and injunction order. The Coliseum Inn was ordered to cease operation, operations of the property for public lodging and public accommodation. The sheriff's office has responded to numerous 911 calls for service ranging from homicides, overdose shootings, domestic theft, property damage, prostitution, drug sales, and the list just goes on and on. From July 1, 2022 through June 14, 2023, 11 months, there were 722 calls for service at the Coliseum Inn alone. But I would also like to add, January 1, 2011 through June 14, 2023, there were 6,403 calls for service at that location. We held numerous meetings with the owners of the Coliseum Inn advising them of the nuisance that their establishment was causing within the community. They did nothing. They ignored the warnings. It was business as usual. During one of the final, final meetings, the owner of the Coliseum Inn was asked a question. Would you let any of your family members stay in those rooms? After a long hesitation, he replied, no. The next question was, why? That question never got answered. Because of the help from the alcohol law enforcement, ALE, and the information received from the citizens of the Bel Air Community Watch, we were able to successfully close that business. And that's all I have. Y'all have any questions of me?
I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you to the entire department for your service in that area. It's much appreciated that citizens in the, uh, community watches, they were diligent.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, I think this is the first part in getting our community back. This is just what we need. Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all.
At this time, I will call on Manager Greer to, we'll move on to our public comments, and I will call on Com- um, Manager Greer.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairwoman. The public comment policy is as follows. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. The time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute limit is attained. No, at no time may, no time may be yielded by the speaker by, to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. The public, public comment period is intended to require the board, is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. And then, speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of a person seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated, and written comments and/or supporting documentation may be left with the clerk to the board.
Thank you. Madam Clark, any speakers?
We have two speakers. Our first speaker is Vicki Mullins.
Good evening.
Who do you microphone?
I live in the country. I don't need a microphone. Okay, my name is Vicki Mullins. I live at 5905 Turnbull Road. And I have come before you guys to invite you to your Fatville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Meeting, August 1. Please try to come. There are issues that the commission needs to know about, okay? So that is from me personally, to come and sit and listen in on the meeting, please. And item number two, I still want water clean. So, uh, we're still, we've been at it six years. Six years carrying water. I'm not getting no younger. That age don't go backwards. It's going forward. And I don't mind saying, I will be 63 in August. I am still picking up those gallons of water. And it's not just for me. Look at our older ones. Stop and look at what they're going through. I mean, I can't imagine them even picking them up. Cause they got to come from the floor, pick them up, you know, to do everything with. So, you know, I know you guys are probably doing all you can, but the time for hands to be untied is now. We need to keep fighting and keep going, so. And I appreciate y'all letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Wes Waller.
Welcome, Mr. Waller.
Thank you. I'm here about the proposed sand mine because...
If you could speak up and then state your name and address.
My name's Wes Waller. I live at 8215 Carlos Road in Linden.
Thank you.
And the proposed sand mine, that little green dot is my land. There's a sand mine already across the road. Now, there's gonna be one on this side and behind me. I've only lived there a little over a year. We bought it. And there was no discussion about it being sold or anything. I'll never sell mommy daddy's land. You know, and, and now it's, it's beautiful. But as soon as this gets approved, if it does, there's gonna be a mound of dirt on one side of me and another mound of dirt behind me. There's gonna be dust everywhere, noise. They, people say, well, why don't you just sell and move? Nobody's gonna buy a house in a sand mine. You know, we even bought an extra piece of land so we could have someplace for the kids, you know? And, uh, that's been put on hold to have any more houses put on it. But it's just, I know I'm only one person. And I'm glad I come in here to say my piece, and I'm glad y'all listened to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd ask to move item C from the consent agenda.
Okay, if I can get a motion with the exception of item 3C.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
Madam Chair, I pulled the item 3C so we can make sure that we have it clear as to what that is, which is consideration of approval of the property tax collection agreements with the city of Fayetteville and the town of Spring Lake. That has to do with, deal with property taxes and the collection by the county of the property tax. Has nothing to do with sales tax and just to make sure it's abundantly clear that the county of Cumberland has not changed its method of collecting, um, sales tax. We have not gone from a per capita to an ad valorem, so, um, I've seen that in the media. I just want to make sure that people understand the difference between the sales tax and what this is, which is the administration of collecting of property taxes by the county. We've done it with all the other municipalities. I think these are the last two municipalities, and they finally agreed to do this, and it's in our budget, but clear, uh, clear that this has nothing to do with sales tax. Cumberland County has not changed its method of collecting sales tax. It has not changed from per capita to, uh, to ad valorem, and so I would move to approve these agreements.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm gonna make you a commissioner, just not a District Two. Manager Greer.
Um, up next, we have a public hearing, a street naming case, SN 0501. The, um, public hearing, uh, policy is arguments may, can be made by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will not be permitted at the discrep, will be, only permitted at the discretion of the chairwoman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. The, like I said, the first, uh, the street naming case, SN 0501, involves a Braxton Road and having two streets with the same name. Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspection, will answer any questions and provide an overview.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the slide and before you this evening is the county manager had mentioned is case SN 0501. This is a street name change from Braxton Road to P-Bar Lane. You can see by the map in front of you that this particular site is, um, is in the Grays Creek area of the county, just south of I-95, heading down Chickenfoot Road. So, um, the reason for the renaming is there was an NCDOT realignment of Braxton Road, which I'll get into in just a minute. You'll see the map. Uh, as a part of that, you know, the part of Braxton Road was cut off, so we had to assign a name for, uh, the part that was, um, created. And so, uh, per our policy, we went through that process. There were two property enters that were contacted out here. Uh, the standard process for DOT projects is that we'll send out some suggested names, then they will come back to us either saying they like the names or maybe even suggest another name. They did the latter. They suggested P-Bar Lane. We went through our system, and there was nothing that says that you can't call something P-Bar Lane. So anyway, so we moved forward with that. As you can see here by the map, you can see the newly realigned Braxton Road comes out right here. Uh, the, the line that's in blue is what is proposed to be going to P-Bar Lane as far as the name is concerned. We added this slide just so you can see a, a before and after. So the top, you can see before of what was there. You can see the after DOT project just below with the realignment of the road and the newly constructed road that just cut straight all the way out to Chickenfoot Road. This is standing at the new section that's created for P-Bar Lane or the proposed P-Bar Lane. You can see the sign out there that which we post for the public hearing. Pretty straightforward. That's all really I have to add. If you have any other questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioner Boos.
Thank you. Uh, is there, is that an acronym or is it like Patricia Bar or?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, so, um, since we only have two owners or two property enters, there's really only one owner, so it's a derivation of the family that lives out there. Uh, so P-Bar was a variation of PR Barker, which is the family, I guess it's a, a family name that lives out there, so it's P-Bar for PR Barker.
Okay.
And that's what they proposed, and again, it meets all of our standards for road names, so we didn't see a reason why not.
Okay. Any, any other questions, discussion? Okay, if I could get a motion?
We gotta open the?
Oh, I'm sorry. We open up, um, public forum?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. Are there any speakers? There are no speakers. Okay, we'll close public hearing. If I can get a motion?
Move we approve the name to P-Bar Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Up next, we have a rezoning case number 220067, where we are rezoning approximately 63 acres south of, um, Carlos Road, uh, Carlos Road. Ross Howard, again, will go through the overview and, uh, present the information, answer any questions for this public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Uh, as was stated, this is case ZON 22-0067. This is rezoning from A1 to A1 CZ. You can see by the location map, this is, uh, this is up towards the Linden area in the north central part of the county, uh, as, as indicated by the red star on the location map. Uh, the applicant and the owner is Mr. Brian Rayner. The agent is Red Rock Materials LLC. The request as is stated before is to go from A1, which is our standard agricultural district, to a conditional agricultural district for a sand pit mining operation out there for just a little under 63 acres. You can see it's off of Carlos Road. You can see the map here. This is the highlighted portion that is in red. See if I can get my arrow up here. Uh, you can see the highlighted portion in red. It does include a little sliver across the street that you can see here, but that's not included in this particular, um, it's included in the parcel, but it's not included in the request. So we're only gonna be talking about the southern portion of Carlos Road. So you can see out here, this is a primarily a farming type of area. It's agriculture. There is the, um, what was the name of the subdivision that was over there? Bailey?
Teresa and Bailey Point.
Yeah, Bailey Point, yeah. So like you have the Bailey Point subdivision that sits out here. Uh, there's an existing pit mining operation, as you can see, that's existing right across the street. Uh, so this would just be adding to that on the southern part of Carlos Road. So it's a, you do have some single family out there, and you have a pit mining operation as well, but it's a pretty wide open as far as types of, um, areas of land. Here's the zoning map. You can see the primary zoning that's out there is gonna be A1, which is two acre minimum lot sizes. Uh, the Bailey subdivision that was mentioned just before is an RR, which is 20,000 square feet minimum lot sizes. Uh, there is the presence of hydroic soils and hydroconclusion soils out here. There is no water in sewer. Uh, when staff had taken a look at this against the plans, it is subject to the North Central Cumberland Land Use Plan, which designate this area as farmland. The policies that are applicable in that plan do say to locate industries and manufacturing enterprises that have adequate infrastructure, land for buffering, and vehicular and pedestrian circulation and landscaping. So staff felt it was compliant with the plan, so we moved forward accordingly with that recommendation to the planning board. This is the subject site standing on Carlos Road. You can see it's a currently just, uh, it's a field. Again, another view on the other side. This is the northwest view of Carlos Road with the site immediately on the left-hand side. You can see that we have the zoning sign per state statutes for public notification. This is the northeast view on Carlos Road. You can see the existing pit mining operation and pond lake that sits pretty much right on the road, just past the fence. This is the southeast view, again, with the site in question immediately on the, on the right-hand side. So before we get into the next couple of slides, I do want to mention that this case came to the planning board in September of 2022. Uh, at that particular time, uh, it was, um, the planning board had recommended a denial vote of six to one for the case as it was submitted at that time. Uh, I know the applicant, before it came to the board, said that they wanted to go out and be able to meet with the neighbors and engage in discussions. There's been a, a few meetings with staff to be able to bolster up some of the conditions that were offered on this site as well, too, uh, which I'll get into here in just a minute. Uh, but I just wanted just to say that this had been, and then it went back to the planning board in this last month, and then that six to one vote switched over to an eight to zero approval, uh, in favor of recommending the case. So the site plan that you can see that was submitted and is part of this case, so this will be tied to the development of the site, you can see it's pretty much wide open. This little crosshatch area that's in the middle is the ultimate pit that you can see there, where a lot of the activity is gonna happen. There is a future part of a pit that's up here in this smaller section. There is significant buffering that has been offered by the applicant. The entire perimeter will include a, a bermed, a planted bermed area around the entire perimeter, so for all intents and purposes, there's gonna be a lot of shielding on there. Um, the buffering is increased into the site, so, um, you're looking at a 50-foot buffer off of the property lines and 30-foot buffer off of any type of like wetlands that are identified. So this would be in addition to any spacing that's between this site and then like the residential uses, for example, cause they're the most impacted by the case. As I said before, he had, uh, the applicant had proposed a good, about 40 conditions on the site. I just tried to highlight some of the ones on here. In general, I'm not gonna read all of this stuff for you, but in general, uh, there were some conditions that were added at the very beginning. The first couple just addressed what type of activity it's gonna be. They're gonna be limiting their hours of operation from Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 6:00 PM, so there's no operation of the mine itself on the weekends. You can see that they've put some conditions about how they will be applying for various state permits like DOT and all of the mining permits and the things that deal with water quality. Uh, there's also gonna be some access points just on Carlos Road on one access, so there's, so there's that. Uh, they did add conditions eight through roughly around 11, some conditions that address how they're gonna hit the buffering and adding a lot of the berming and how they'll handle stockpiling of sand on the property. And then finally, as you're heading toward the bottom of the, of this condition sheet, they're gonna say there's no blasting. This is gonna be just simply a pit mining operation for sand. So, uh, so, some of the other key conditions that were added as a part of this as well, too, um, is that, of course, they're gonna have to follow the conditional zoning site plan that's been submitted. When it's, uh, when the site has been finished, as far as mining, it's gonna be left as a spring-fed lake. Um, any of the proposed traffic generated by the operations will be limited to state-owned roadways, and of course, the applicant's responsible for all the driveway permits and everything and dealing with the coordination of DOT. You gotta be permitted by the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources and other state and local agencies. And of, and of course, finally, the one we wanted to highlight was any excavation shall be located 100 feet or more and backfill to 100 feet from the street right-of-way line. So there, so with, with the size of the property, you are looking at some pretty significant buffering and setbacks from the property lines and the boundaries. from the property lines and the boundaries. As I said before, staff had recommended approval of this request, and we took this finally to the planning board the second time this last month. They had supported the request by an eight to zero vote with all of the conditions that had been worked out with the applicant. So if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Any questions?
I just, oh, go ahead. I just gotta, oh, go ahead. I'll wait out there.
I was just wondering, what is the, what is the sand mine? Do you know what they're using it for?
Yeah, so the discussion at the planning board was that a good percentage of it, the way I understand it, the applicant, I believe, is here. Yeah, so he could probably answer a little bit better. But about 60 to 70% of the sand is used for roadway construction for DOT.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I believe that was also mentioned during the part of the presentation is that this particular area, the reason why you see mines that are all around here is there's a particular type of sand that is present in this general geographic location that makes it desirable for the mining.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adams.
I guess mine would be, and I saw all the traffic and the trucks, and what's the traffic count? Have we?
I think the applicant could probably answer that question a little bit better. I know that there's going to be one access point, as I had said before, and then the hours of operation are going to be limited Monday through Friday. So there's going to be no truck traffic of that kind of magnitude during the weekend hours, you know, after 6:00 on Friday up until Sunday evening.
I saw a number of the conditions, and it's just like I always have them. Some of the issue with the one on Ram Street where they're doing the sand and all of that is that what in terms of environmental, in terms of these folks' property, is it going to be wet down? What is it that in terms of being able to make sure that this stuff doesn't impact some of those neighbors?
A lot of that deals with the noise limitations that we put. So if you are speaking just.
It's sand and it's going to blow and I'm talking about all of that. It's the environmental impact that I'm talking about. I didn't see any of that in any of this stuff about environmental impact.
Right. Again, I think the applicant could probably go to a little bit more because that's dealing with his operations. But I'm a, my understanding is that a lot of the permitting that's coming from the state through the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources, I guess it would be DEQ. But I think they have standards on their permits of controlling what gets blown off-site and then what, how they have to control anything that goes out onto the roads. I know DOT controls anything that is spread out into the roads and how they can be able to clean up any of that.
So staff and the planning board didn't ask any of that? And ask DEQ about any of that beforehand? I mean, we're guessing at it. I mean, that would seem to be something that you want to know when you're getting ready to rezone something.
Right.
Especially with all the environmental issues that go around with it.
Right. I don't recall it being a strong point of our point of conversation at the meeting. I think it was more about the, we did talk about traffic, you know, the type of traffic that would be generated by that. And then I think that a lot of the discussion was, were more centered around is are there adequate sort of buffering and setbacks off of the property line to the property enters that are going to be adjacent to it?
I guess my last question is, this is up near Linden Outlook. They're going to expand 401. So where are they taking it? What's it, I mean, it's going to be DOT, so I mean, this stuff's got to be trucked somewhere.
Again, I think that's probably going to be more of an operational question for the owner.
Nobody asked that at planning or any of those?
No, they asked what the sand would be used for, and I think the owner said it was going to be more, as I said, about 70% kind of goes into the road construction is what that sand will be used for. But we didn't say where because it's obviously going to go in different locations.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Yep.
At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are four speakers, three in favor, one opposed.
First speaker?
Michael Blakely. Three minutes.
I'm Michael Blakely, drafting and design services, 6728 Carleton Road. And I also have Brian Rayner, which is the applicant and owner.
Which one is going to be speaking?
I'll speak first.
Okay.
Or you want to go ahead and speak? You can go ahead, but I'll.
You only have three minutes.
Wait a minute, what they're getting out?
They've each signed up.
Okay, so one at a time.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. So I'm the designer of the site and I'm here to answer any questions. And Mr. Rayner will point some more on the questions that Mr. Adams had. All of the, this is the first step in the permitting for the site, and this site has to be permitted by NC DOT for a driveway entrance location. It also has to go through NC DEQ for a state mining permit. And under the state mining permit, there is particular stipulations about dust and sediment control that's required. So what we have to submit is a full set of plans, air quality permit, a water quality permit. So all of that permitting is regulated by the state, and the state directly addresses any concerns or comments that come from the neighbors as part of the mining permit. And there's actually a portion of it that requires a public hearing, just like we're doing here. We'll send out notifications to all the surrounding property owners. The state will hold a meeting if required based on comments back from the community. So this is basically the first round of, you know, getting to, starting the process. There's a lot of agencies that we still have to go through to get us to a mining permit and being able to use the site. NC DOT, we talked with them briefly about the entrance and driveways, where it's anticipating 30 to 40 trucks per day. If you do the math on it, 30, 40 trucks per day is almost impossible because if you loaded a truck every 15 minutes, that only allowed you like 25 trucks a day to get in and out with one loader. And nobody's that efficient on a site. So we, what we do is we give a maximum, just like you do in any type of engineering. You do a peak hour. And, but the logistics of it, you know, you can, like I said, you could only get like 25 trucks per day. And we still have to get that approved by NC DOT for a driveway permit. And they'll, what they've been doing lately is requiring us to do any like pavement studies that'll be a part of that process due to the type of traffic that's there. There are two seconds left, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Brian Rayner.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Mr. Rayner.
2204 Bayview Drive. I also am a partner in Highland Paving Company here in town, and we have a site comparable to this over on Fields Road off of I-95. And our operation is to serve our facilities and it's not a commercial operation. And so there'll be days that we won't even operate. So it's not consistent and fully staffed, eight to nine hours a day. We'll come in, mine some sand, stockpile our asphalt plant facilities, and then leave. I own several parcels of land up in that area, and when I found out there was some opposition, being originally from Linden, I had two neighborhood meetings there at the community building. And once they found out who was operating it, the planning board meeting, it changed the second time from the first time once they put a face for the name. And so I would appreciate your approval, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Third speaker is William Like.
You got to come to the, to the mic number one.
I'm William Like with Groundwater Management Associates from Apex, North Carolina. I'm with Groundwater Management Associates, and we did the report, hydrogeology report that you guys have in your notes. And I'm just here, if you have any questions about that, to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
I did want to mention, I think it was just kind of brought up about the covering of the trucks when they come and go. I believe part of the permit that they're going to have to get is they do have to make sure that they cover the trucks when they leave the site to ensure stuff doesn't blow out of the trucks as part of their permitting.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
This time? Oh, one in opposition. Wes Waller, he already spoke. He spoke earlier. Right. He just got it. He's gone.
He signed up for both, but he's, I believe he's left.
Yeah, he's there. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
And I hear him talking about DEQ. That's the same DEQ that's dealing with me down in Grace Creek. So I don't get a whole lot of warm fuzzies in terms of DEQ. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, if I can get a motion.
Well, I got a comment first.
Commissioner Keith.
Yeah. So it sounds to me like, in reading the notes, the owner did what we have asked a number of times, has gone out into the community and talked to the people. By reading the planning board notes, there were a number of people that came and spoke in opposition, but after they've had these meetings, it seems like a lot of that has been alleviated in some, somewhere or the other. I go by the one over there off 295 every day. And, you know, it seems to be a well-run organization, and we do need these kind of things for our roadways, both city roads and county roads. And that being said, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that in case ZON 22-07, I move to approve the rezoning request. 67, I'm sorry. Thank you. I move to approve the rezoning request from A-1 Agriculture District to A-1 Conditional Zoning Agriculture District, and find the request is consistent with the North Central Land Use Plan, which calls for farmland at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding use and activities of the zoning.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Boos, and Commissioner Keith. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We'll now move on to items of business. Manager Greer.
Yes, the first item of business is consideration of ARP committee recommendations from the June 6 ARP Committee meeting. Ty Vault, Chief of Staff, will present these items.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the Board's ARP Subcommittee met on Tuesday, June 6, and I just wanted to provide a brief overview of those recommendations. At the meeting, the committee recommended a revision to policy number 10-2.9, the Small Business Economic Assistance Program, to make necessary changes in light of revised and complete guidance from the U.S. Department of Treasury in the final rule. The committee also recommended the approval of $579,725 to fund 16 local nonprofits here in Cumberland County under the COVID-19 Assistance in Nonprofits Program. These recommendations are the final disposition of all nonprofit applications. Previously, the Board approved 23 applications in the amount of $1.1 million. If the Board approves these recommendations, it would bring that total to $1.75 million in recommendations for nonprofits. And so staff is requesting that the Board approve these recommendations from the ARP Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, yours ain't, yours not working. We quit yours from working. Well, you know. I got here early.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I just want to say that the ARP Committee, which is Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Stewart and I, we've been very diligent through this. Everybody has been very involved. And for anybody that has any questions, we did not just blanketly approve everything that was asked. We took a deep dive into all these recommendations, and we felt like that these were in the best use in the county, and they were providing services that we couldn't do at that time. So at this time, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Keith, I think, you can make that motion, but we also, in terms of doing this, took them out of our budget because they were getting these. So I just, for those organizations who think we didn't fund them in the budget, it's because they got this from the ARP Committee.
Yeah. So to the rest of the Commissioners, the committee was very diligent as they went through this. And am I going to have to do these separately? The revision? The revision and the approval?
We got another, we got another comment on the floor if you're getting ready to make a motion.
Just briefly, I agree with Commissioner Keith. It looked like we might, when it all first started, get in the trouble with everybody else's doing was, you know, get the money, give it away. You know, like, well, then the accounting, the record-keeping, and the rules on how to distribute it started changing left and right. And the three of you got on it and said, hold on, let's do this and do it as best we can, but we're not going to do it five times. And so I'd like to congratulate you all on, you know, putting in the extra hours and making sure you got it done right. And you know that hates, it kills me to say that about the end.
Well, you know, it's Ty, Vicky, and Finance and all of them.
It's hard to stay on top.
They're still on our back. And the staff. And so the staff did an extra job.
Staffs go on other counties and municipalities and stuff. They're going like, oh.
And we get, we take a lot of slack for not just jumping up and being reactive when it came to this ARP funds. But we did take our time. We went back. I know we got on you all's nerves, but we just wanted to make sure that we did the best we could with what we had. And so you all did, did a great job. Did an absolutely great job. So Commissioner Keith?
Madam Chair, I'm going to actually make both motions. The first one is a revision to policy number 10-2-9, Small Business Economic Assistance Revision to the Policy. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
I have a discussion, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Push your button, push your button. You don't have to do it now, but I got you.
I also like to commend the committee on this. And as I understand it, this opens on, what, July 1st?
July the 1st through July 30th.
And when does it, to July the 30th?
Yes, 31st, 31st, I'm sorry.
And to whom, to whom do they apply or who's the contact person called in?
If they, go ahead, Ty.
Sure. So there will be an information session before the end of the month, basically rolling out the program. The application will be an electronic application on the county's website, and the individuals can apply directly to that link through July 1 through July 31. We'll close it on July 31, and then we will immediately start reviewing applications.
And how will they be screened? Will that be our staff or just exactly?
Yes, sir. So we have a review committee amongst staff, and so the staff has an ARP Staff Committee that vets the applications, and then they come forward to the Board's ARP Subcommittee, and then the approval goes from there to the full Board.
Just a side comment. I know FEB will farm this out to a consultant or something, as I believe was the case. And I didn't know if we were doing the same thing. So we're doing it in-house.
We do, yes, sir. We do the entire program in-house.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. As there, there was a motion, and was it seconded by Commissioner Adams? So it's been motioned improperly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to also make a motion to approve the nonprofit funding recommendations by the ARP Committee.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Keith and Mr. Vault.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item 5B. Manager Greer.
Yeah, this is a consideration of a preopening agreement with OvG Group, OVG, related to the opening of the Crown Event Center. We also ask for a policy amendment regarding the start of the contract. And Brian Haney, Assistant County Manager, Brian Haney will take us through this and answer any questions. You may head.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Haney.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners. I'm here to present, as the county manager said, an agreement with OVG, the current manager of the Crown Complex, to provide preopening consulting services for the new Crown Event Center. OVG has been involved with the project since kickoff last year and as part of the project delivery team in following the hire of project architect Ewan Cole and the beginning of. and the beginning of the design process earlier this year, uh, they have been part of the team to provide invaluable input regarding items related to the successful operation of the facility. Uh, beyond, uh, this, these services are beyond the scope of the existing management agreement we have with OVG. Uh, the agreement you have before you tonight would be effective February 1st, which coincides with the beginning of the design phase for the project, uh, with services provided at a cost of $5,000 per month through the opening of the new Crown Events Center, uh, and it also includes up to $15,000 in reimbursable expenses for, uh, travel and other expenses through the life of the contract.
Oh, okay.
In order to approve this item, uh, you will need to, uh, approve the agreement as well as an exception to county purchasing policy regarding informal RFPs for services valued at $30,000 and above, as well as, uh, Budget Ordinance Amendment, uh, Number B-231353, uh, to pay, uh, those costs for the current fiscal year. Seth Benoit, uh, General Manager for the Crown, uh, Complex, is here as well tonight.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Adams?
I'm going to tell you, I have a problem with this, with this. Um, and especially since we've taken it back to February 1st of 2023. I've, I've sat on the committee since the beginning and have not heard anything about this contract or, or the services to be able to be done. And so clearly, when we were talking about this and talking about, and I, I asked a question specifically, 131 was going to be all-in. That's what y'all told me. 131 was all-in. This is not all-in. If I'm adding stuff to the contract all the time, it's not all-in. Going back to February of 2023, paying it forward, then even with that, is I'm going to continue to pay it until it's done, which doesn't have, it's not like I look in a year. I mean, I, I just don't understand, I hired these folk, a, and I do understand OVG needs to be, um, at least, I guess, consulted or asked about, here's what we're looking at, because if, they're going to run the building. I do understand that. But, uh, opening the contract just says, "I'm going to pay you travel." I, I don't know what that is. I don't know where they're coming from. I guess they're coming from all of these places. And then $5,000 a month until the building's done, and I don't know when the building's going to be done. It would be my recommendation that, so we can hear the whole thing and, and see exactly what these consulting services are, that it go back to the Crown Committee, uh, for the committee to at least get some in-depth information of how long this has been going, what we're doing. I do understand, I, I talked to Commissioner Keith, thank you for your information. I did talk to Seth. Evidently, this conversation's been going on for a while, and I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody, but I think we got to be abundantly clear when we say to these folk, when we put it out there, 131 was all-in, and that's not even all-in because we did some other stuff, uh, prior to, that we did out of general fund. Now you're coming back and telling me we're not all-in.
So I, I think the, the intent, and I understand, uh, what, what you're saying, uh, Vice Chairman, uh, the intent of the contract was, uh, because the county obviously is not building these facilities every day and does not have the expertise, uh, related to-
Well, I understand why you need them, but what I'm saying is, if it goes back to February 1st of 2023, they've been operating in this, why didn't this committee know that? I either put it into 131, so I subtracted out, down to get it in there or not, but then you tell me it's all-in at 131, but then you come back and say, "Well, nah, it's not really all-in because I got some more I'm adding to it," which was already there, I guess. At least that the services they provided from February until we voted on the 131. That we owed them some money from then. I guess it's that wherever the agreement was, because the committee never heard it. So the committee never, uh, agreed to do that, and there was never a vote taken by the, uh, the committee. Oh, it goes to, uh-
Commissioner Keith.
Sure, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, many of us have been in, involved in this in a long, a, a long time, and, uh, OVG has been a partner with the county for, for many years. February was only like two months ago, three months ago, right?
June.
Yeah, okay.
It must've been five, it's 25,000.
But if, right now, we're, we're set on a completion date of, uh, December at, December of 2025. Um, for, for the, the service that, that OVG has been with us, they helped us with the, the consultant, and they, they helped us with the architect. They've helped us, uh, choose a very, uh, reliable, uh, construction manager at risk. At the end of the day, we're, we're, we're talking about $130,000 out of $131 million. Now, that's one-tenth of 1%, granted, I got it, and I think we're talking about a principle here as much as we are talking about a financial decision here. I think the principle is, I just happen to know, Commissioner Adams, that this has been going on for months, well before February, and that, that, that these, these have been going on, and they have provided a service to the county that I don't believe the county could have done it. Should they have come to our committee? Uh, probably so. But they've been operating without a contract now, but giving professional services for five months now. What, and, and I understand the open-ended side of this, would you be comfortable with a sunset of December 2025 that this contract, uh, consulting part of this contract would be finished? Uh, you don't have to answer that. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry, if it's, if it's to put an end date on it, I, I believe they should be compensated for their professional advice. Thank you.
Commissioner Keith?
Yes.
I hear what you're saying, but that concerns me, because if other companies start giving us professional advice and then say, "Oh, I need you to pay me for that," I don't think we can go back and retro-activate stuff like that.
Well, it's not their fault they don't have a con, but, Madam Chair, sorry, it's not their fault they don't have a contract.
I understand, I understand that. It's not, it's not on them. They're doing us a favor, and, I mean, I, I don't know, that, that doesn't sit with me. Commissioner Faircloth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that, uh, I, I feel like I'm playing catch-up on a lot of this, uh, uh, facility and so forth, and so I, I, I have a uncomfortable feeling that the committee didn't know about this, and it, it would, it would, it would seem appropriate to me for the committee to be allowed to study this before this Board has to take action on it. So if you want to refer that to the faci, whatever that committee is called, uh, uh, I would certainly support that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Adams?
A, a, and this has nothing to do with OVG, because I think even when we started this, OVG paid some of the funds upfront for us to do some of the studies. So i, i, it's more of transparency to tell these folk, 131 is all-in. That's the problem I have, and then we adding stuff to it. Where down the road does this end? And I think, uh, it talks about travel. Um, I don't know what the travel is. How much travel did we do from February to now, so I know what that is going forward, at least, uh, estimate? Because this is kind of open-ended in terms of, "I'm just going to pay for travel. I don't know how many people they bring." Sometimes they might bring three, maybe four. I don't know. So that's a problem I have, Mr. Keith, and, and, uh, I, I, and I do have a problem with the open-ended. So eventually, if we get to the December or end date, or even if we just looked at it yearly or whatever, I don't know. I think, one, I want to be fair to OVG, but it's also to be fair to the process and to these citizens when we tell them 131 is all-in. Um, or at least if we had, and, and I'm beating up on staff today, even if y'all had told us, "This is coming," I would have, I would have understood that. That's not OVG. That's somewhere in our internal stuff that the committee never knew about this. And I do know we had a change in, 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 in staff and all of that, so I'm not, I'm not upset with anybody, but I think we just need to be transparent, have it at the committee. I think we got a committee meeting next week. When we got a committee meeting?
There's not one currently scheduled?
Oh, we scheduled one. We always do. Uh, because, no, if we owe these people money, we need to pay them. I think the county, uh, uh, is, is in terms of that, and whatever the contract is going forth, we need a good, clean, clear contract, pay these folks for whatever they're doing, because I think they are. Now, these services do, uh, help them too, in terms of at the end of the day, what they're going to be able to do to run this, uh, uh, if, when they run this, or if they run this, I'm thinking they're going to run this, uh, it does help them too. So, uh, you know, everybody has a little skin in the game. But I would move that it go back to the committee. That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Commissioner Keith?
Can we hear from the attorney on what, what was the problem and why it, why it took, and I know it's been negotiated for a while. What was the, why was it negotiated?
This contract is, was originally presented about February. I recommended that, that they move forward with this contract, but instead, there was a, another section that really amounted to an additional, totally different thing rather than this pre, uh, uh, opening consulting agreement that was for us to contract, to make another contract with, down the road about the management. It, it didn't make any sense, and that, that's, and they elected not to proceed, and, and I don't know how, how this came about, that they finally brought just this contract forward. But we, we, we would have brought, I would have recommended bringing this contract forward back in February, I mean, but, but it's, that's, that's been the issue.
So there's a reason why they went back to February, because it started back then?
Well, it, I got it in February, but it, it's, it was, it was in February, and it would have started in February, but it, it was a different contract. I mean, what, what you have now is, is a much different contract than what they've been trying to get for the last five months.
What's been, any other questions?
Would you like us to bring it back at a later date, or have a committee meeting prior to getting this approved?
Well, there's a motion on the floor for it to go back to the committee, and it's been properly seconded. All of those in favor of it going back to the committee?
Voting, voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Stewart, and Commissioner Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Keith.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to Item 5C.
Um, next, we have a, um, consideration of a request for qualification for hydro-geological services. We had this on the agenda for the June 8th Agenda Meeting, Agenda Session, uh, and this is for well, uh, locating well lots. Sally Shutt, Assistant County Manager, will be presenting this one, this item and the next item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairwoman. I, in May, the county issued a re, request for qualifications for qualified engineering firms to provide hydro-geological services for the Grace Creek Water District. The selected firm will assist the county with identifying potential well lots, raw water main routes, test well development, well construction, and well field inspection services. Staff reviewed the one submittal received and agreed that HGR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas is qualified to be selected for hydro-geological services. Um, the Public Utilities Division, the General Manager for Natural Resources, Amanda Botter, and County Management are asking the Board to accept the selection of HGR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas as the best qualified for the hydro-geological services, and to grant permission to enter negotiations for a detailed scope of work, cost of services, and to prepare a contract for approval at a future Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Any questions? If I can get a motion.
Madam, uh, ma, uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, I would move to accept the selection of HGR Engineering of the Carolinas as the best qualified, uh, for the hydro-geological services, grant permission to enter negotiation, uh, by the manager for detail, detailed scope of work, cost of service, and then prepare a contract for approval by this Board at a future, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Stewart.
We'll now move on.
Okay, so the next item is 5D, consideration of requests for qualifications for water resources study. Um, the county applied for funding from the North Carolina Division of Environmental Qualities, Division of Water Infrastructure for a water supply feasibility study, and we received notice of intent of funding. In May, we issued a request for qualifications for qualified engineering firms to assist the county with the water resources study in the form of a preliminary engineering report. That report will serve as a long-term plan to provide water beyond the construction of the water system in Grace Creek. The study's scope will include evaluating a water supply intake on the Cape Fear River to service any future county rural water systems. Two firms submitted statements of qualification, and staff reviewed in the submissions and determined that HGR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas to be the best qualified. Uh, this item was brought to you on June 8th at your, um, Agenda Session, and you approved putting it as an item of business. So tonight, we're asking the Board to accept the selection of HGR as the best qualified for the water resources study and grant permission to negotiate the contract and bring it back to you at a future meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Shutt. Are there any questions or discussion?
Madam, um, Chairwoman, I would move to accept the selection of HGR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas as the best qualified for the re, water resource study, grant permission, uh, for the staff to enter negotiations for a detailed scope of work, cost of service, and prepare a contract approval for a future Board of Commissioners meeting to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. Before we move on, let me be clear with, I am not against getting water out to Grace Creek area and Cedar Creek. I am not against that. I am just not favor of the deep wells, but we'll-
Until it comes back, and then we'll see.
Well, we'll see what happens, but just to be clear, I am not, um, against getting water there. We'll move on to Item D, Manager Greer.
E?
E.
E.
Oh, I thought we were on D. Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Um, uh, this is a consideration of contract with Cape Fear, uh, Cape Fear Valley Health System to provide, um, Narcan and, uh, defibrillator pads to the fire departments. Rick Morfield, County Attorney, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, this, uh, I, I found in the minutes, the first official action the Board took on this was more, about a year ago, June the 20th, June 20th, 2022. It had been discussed by the Board at the ARP Committee and at the Board level prior to that, and, but the, you originally created a line item budget in the ARP A Project Ordinance for, for a portion of this, uh, the, the Community Paramedic Program to be done by the hospital. The purchase of Narcan was determined at that time to be done by the Sheriff's Department. Just several iterations of this, o, over time, you have the contract before you tonight. That is how we have finally worked this out. It, Cape Fear Valley is doing all three of those programs. Uh, it's already actually started, the, the Community Paramedic Pro, Program. This is for a contract for, for them to continue that for a two-year period. Uh, the, uh, the, the Community Pro, uh, Paramedic Program, they will also do the Narcan distribution to the fire departments, and they've added, uh, the fill, defibrillator pads program also to the fire departments. Uh, the total cost of those three programs is, in the contract, a million, 29,081 dollars, and, uh, the contract has all the details and the budget by which the money would be spent, and I'd recommend an approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Uh, Madam Chair, Chairwoman, Mr., Commissioner, Commissioner Keith done sabotaged my button. My button don't even want to work anymore. I got that hit it too many times. I, I just want to say this, though. Um, hats off to, um, Commissioner Stewart, uh, who was at a meeting and, uh, learned about the County Paramedic, uh, Program and brought that, that back to this county. So I just want to say hats off and thank you for bringing it, because I think it's going to save lives, and hopefully, as we deal with, um, uh, the opiate, um, crisis, that this will be beneficial to that. Then hats off to, uh, because I, I sat on that committee, but, uh, these are, I just want to give credit to the people who have credit for this. This is Commissioner Keith, who, uh, with the Narcan and the defibrillators to the fire departments to make sure that they have what they needed to the volunteer fire departments in this community to be able to, uh, uh, take care of the citizens of this community. So thank you both for bringing those back. I think this was a great, I think this was a great use of this million dollars, and I would move to approve the contract.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
And, Madam Chair, thank you to Cape Fear Valley for stepping up with this, this is good partnerships, and Glenn, thank you for those words, it truly was a teamwork from, hitting it from all lines, because we're responsible for public safety, and this is part, part of public safety, so, for the hospital, thank you very much for your participation in this and partnership.
That's what gets things done, collaboration, that's what gets things done.
Teamwork is the dream work.
Teamwork makes the dream work, teamwork. We don't always agree on everything, but we come together for the common good. We'll now move on to item F.
Item F is a contract, a consideration of a contract with Fayetteville State University to provide economic development services through its innovation and entrepreneurial hub. Rick Morfield will go through this contract also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Again, Commissioners, this is another very collaborative effort, and, and, and it's been out there for a while, I, I saw that you, you actually took action, May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, more than a year ago, for the first time on this. There was some time when we were trying to work out, trying to pay with it directly with ARPA funds, but we, we're not able to do that, but the freedom capacity funds from ARP would, it, it, will be used for this program, it's for the $250,000, and the, the program is, is for specified services to be provided that are in the nature of the statutory basis in the contract, in the nature of economic development services, and this again will run forward for two years, if, if the, if they don't spend the money faster than that, but, but up to, up to two years. And the, the contract is for the use of this funding for Fayetteville State University to provide these services, is authorized by the statutes, and within the contract budget, I recommend a approval.
Madam Chairwoman, I will say, at, at the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County did this with their funds, but I do sit as the Chair of Fayetteville State's Board of Trustees, I don't get any kind of remuneration or anything, and none of this contract annules to me, so I don't have a conflict, but I want to put that in the minutes.
And that's also a board that's established by the state.
That's right.
A board established by the state.
Commissioner Fairclough?
I have one question for the county attorney, let me turn back to it, under, I guess it's Article seven notices, there's a place, there's a place for the agency to show contacts there, and we don't have that, we've got the county contacts, we don't have the agency.
I'm aware of that, they, they just haven't provided, but, but we, before we write them a check, they're gonna get us that money, all right? I mean, get it, they're gonna get that, that information to me, but we, we're aware of that.
Okay, I was, I was wondering if this was the business school part of it, or do you know, who's involved in this?
I, I don't know who would be their contact, the, we've had some different folks involved.
Well, I'm like, I'm like Commissioner Adams, I'm on, I'm on the Advisory Board for the Broadwell School of Business and Economics, and I don't have a conflict either.
No, I don't think so. This is, Golden Lees in it, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill's in it, everybody's in it, it's, actually has its own director from, not from, she came out of the business school, but it's not the business school that kinda oversees it, it's the Chancellor.
But, but this contract is directed with Fayetteville State, I understand.
Yours don't work either.
Commissioner Booth?
Yep, I don't have a conflict, so, I would move to approve the contract with Fayetteville State University for Glenn and Marshall, to provide this economic development services through its innovation and entrepreneurial hub.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor? All right, now we'll call on the Vice Chair for the nominations.
We have the nominations for the Cumberland County Animal Services Board, we have two vacancies, and the recommendation is Jeffrey Brooks and Charlotte Davis. For the Fayetteville Area Convention, Convention, Convention and Visitors Bureau, the name that's on your document is not the one they sent, they sent another one later on, which is Carol Ho, Carol Hogan, and then nomination of Michelle Williams.
Okay.
Second.
All those are nominations, we'll now move, we'll now move on to appointments, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna say, originally, Ms. Hogan was their pick, but they thought she wasn't qualified, but it turns out she was qualified, so that was their, their suggestion from distinctly Fayetteville.
Okay, well, now move on to appointments.
I'm sorry, did he nominate?
That was just nominated, just two people nominated.
Okay.
Now, these are for appointments. Make a motion for the Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Mike Fiala for the juvenile defense attorney, DeShia Baldwin, the person under the age of 21, and Terrazine Garner for the local management managed care of mental health. And at large, Representatives Dr. Antonio Jones and Dr. Mark Kendrick, that would be a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
The, the Joint Fort Liberty and Cumberland County Food Policy Council, I guess we had to change the name, the Kenny Bailey, who works in local government, that would be a motion to appoint him.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion for the Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who just invited y'all to the meeting, Ms. Vicky Mullins.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Did you miss it? Yes, we just did.
And the Local Firefighters Relief Fund Board, this is out in Vander, Donnie Griffin for the Vander Fire Department, move that he be appointed.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, at this time, we will now move, if I can get a motion, to go into closed session.
Move we go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318 and 11A6 to discuss personnel, and also 143-318, 11A5 to discuss a real property acquisition.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous. Unanimous.